Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, April 6, 2022, meeting of the Chapacua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in a work session and then executive session since 5:45 PM. Can I have a motion, please, to reconvene the public meeting at 7:48 PM? Can I move? All in favor? Please stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening. I want to start tonight by acknowledging that unfortunately, there was an incident of hate speech at Greeley last week. As you know, we as a community have been working very hard to create a school community where these incidents don't happen. Clearly, we're not there yet, but we will keep working to get there. Central to our mission is creating school communities where all of our students feel valued, respected, and that their voices can be heard and that their opinions matter. Hate speech undermines these goals and our values and will not be tolerated. In response to community feedback back in 2020, we restructured our discipline code around incidents of bias and hate speech. That code has been followed in this case. I obviously cannot give you any details about an individual student, but I assure you that the incident has been treated as an act of hate speech and the code of conduct has been followed. The discipline is only part of the point, however. It would be much better if nobody had to be disciplined under the code for incidents of bias or hate speech because they didn't happen. That's our work as a school community and as a larger community. We are committed to doing the work of getting there and creating a community where every member of our community feels valued and where we can have opened and honest conversations about race and fill in the gaps in education that lead to this behavior. Dr. Ackerman will be updating the community as well, but I wanted to start my report tonight by telling you, our community, that as a board, we are appalled by this behavior and committed to continuing the work of making our district better. I mentioned at our last meeting that we're running focus groups for community members to provide feedback on our DEI work so far and to help us plan forward and make adjustments. We've gotten a really good response, which is great. So if you had not had the opportunity to sign up and would like to, to participate, should you find that there are no available spots, please do join the waitlist. We will be looking at how many people are on the waitlist after spring break and adding additional sessions. It will be helpful to us to know how many people would like to join the additional sessions so we know how many to add. So please, if you'd like to participate, sign up in the few open spots left or join the waitlist and we will reach out after the break. I want to also mention that the Special Education Strategic Planning Committee met last Friday for a full-day work session. We thank Jamie Alderman for her leadership on this and are excited about the work that's happening there. The plan is for the Strategic Planning Committee to report back to this board at our June 2 meeting. We know there are many in the community anxiously awaiting that report, so please join us live or watch on the live stream. Also, again, and I've mentioned this the last few meetings, but wanted to reiterate, we know there's been a lot of interest in and feedback around the eighth-grade math program. In case anyone is just tuning in, we will be having a presentation on the program at the May 4 meeting. Should any program adjustments be made, we want to make sure that they're made using all available data, which is ultimately what concerned parents have asked of us. So that presentation will be happening May 4 and then any decisions will be made accordingly. Lastly, the budget is before us for adoption tonight. This year, as is true every year, there are parents who are concerned about class sizes, specifically around specific grades and schools. Our class sizes are contractually bargained between the teachers and the administration. There is never a year where they are uniform across all grades and buildings, and I know that it is frustrating when your child is slated to be in a class on the bigger side. I want to assure you that should enrollment numbers change and push class sizes over the contractual maximums, section adjustments will be made. While we are adopting this budget tonight, I want to note that these are the same proposed sections that have been projected since our first presentation on the budget back in the beginning of January. As we do every year, we will continue to review these numbers over the summer, and if enrollment changes, adjustments will be made. With that, I want to wish everyone a wonderful spring break next week and to everyone celebrating holidays this month, Ramadan, Passover, Easter, I hope you and your families have wonderful holiday celebrations. That is my report.
Thank you, Hillary. Are we ready? Okay, so for the community update, I want to start by just sharing our vaccination information with you. Let me just, okay, so I mean, see our numbers continue to go up, although I think most of the students at this point who are going to be vaccinated have been vaccinated. So again, we appreciate our community for taking this step to keep us all safe. In terms of our positive cases this week, we have, I'm having an issue here. Let's see here. We have an increase in cases that you'll note from Saturday to Wednesday. We have 32, with the most being reported in Greeley. I've had to send out two cluster letters to two different buildings already, so I anticipate that we may have more cases in the future. So I would encourage our families to pick up home tests so that they can use them as our students enter into spring break and hopefully would consider having students tested before they return. They are available at all security desks. Our principal's been handing them out every opportunity they can when they see parents. So again, I would like to ask that people take advantage of these free home tests we have here for their disposal. Okay, so at this point, I'd like Jamie to provide a progress update report to the board on our response to intervention work in connection with the special education review.
Good evening. In both of the reports that were done recently, the special education audit and the equity report, both mentioned that our district was in need of creating and instituting a multi-tiered system of support. An MTSS is kind of the new RTI, which was Response to Intervention. And the most significant change from RTI to MTSS is the social-emotional learning component. So MTSS includes that in addition to the academics that were a part of a Response to Intervention system. We have been working with Jim Wright, who you see on the screen, and he has been working with a district leadership team that is one building administrator and one other member of their either AIS team or their clinical team. And we have been working on designing the plan and process for a K-8 MTSS process. And our high school friends have recently gotten on board so that they could have a clear understanding of what the process looks like prior to high school, knowing that theirs may need to look a little bit different, but we want to make sure that it's a fluid and logical process. And so our hope and plan is to have our new MTSS process in place and implemented in September at the start of the next school year.
Thank you, Jamie. So now I'd like Tony to provide for you an update on the work that we'll be participating in on Friday for early release day with Insight.
Thank you, Christine. So Friday is our last of three early release days that we've had over the last several months, and our focus for Friday will be to launch our district equity team, which is based on a fellowship that you all approved at a meeting not too long ago. So we're excited. We have members from the teaching unit, teaching assistants, and both COSA and CSCA participating in the district equity team in addition to our administrators. So that team will launch on Friday, and Kia, one of our partners from Insight, our project manager, will be there to help us launch the district equity team. In addition, there will be District YPD on Friday afternoon for our instructional staff, K through 12, and the focus there will be equity detours and equity literary abilities, and this builds on our work earlier related to implicit bias.
Thank you, Tony. And at this point, I need to provide the Board of Education with the quarter-three incident report on our hate speech, bias, and incidents of discrimination. So I'd like to share with you that we've had incidents at all three levels over quarter three, which is concerning to us. Again, most of our incidents tend to center on hate speech. We had one situation where we had to send out a community notification of Greeley, which Hillary had mentioned in her opening report. We look forward to our continued partnership with Insight to help with our work around social justice and equity with our students, and I hope to continue to make progress so we'll be at a point where we won't be addressing any behaviors like this any longer in our school district. But obviously, this is certainly a level of concern for us, and I am hopeful that through your focus groups with our parents and our students and our staff in the near future, we'll have more information to help us move forward in a way that's where all students feel valued and seen for who they are. All right, so now I'm going to, I'm sorry, this thing is really sensitive today. I'm going to transition over to Josh, and I know Todd's going to make some comments as well on behalf of the CSF because we have a traditional grant award on the agenda that's substantial. So Josh?
Great. So over this last school year, the high school mathematics teachers and our seventh and eighth-grade math teachers have written a CSF traditional grant for redefining what math classrooms look like. A few weeks ago, the high school math that presented around building thinking classrooms, and this work is really taking off and helping to really create environments for our classes where students have lots of options to think about how they're writing on walls, they're writing on desks, they're working in small groups, working in pairs, working individually. So the next step is us thinking about what do we need to do in our classrooms that we haven't redesigned in mathematics to create environments that are just really comfortable and really flexible and allow for what the future vision of mathematics looks like in the classroom. So if you go to the next slide, we are building on all of the work of Bob Dillon, who has worked with us, Peter Littledoll, who did building thinking classrooms, and then all of the work of our architects at Fielding International to create new environments for classrooms that really the biggest premise is around defronting the classroom. So we all think about math classrooms that have blackboard or whiteboards in the front and it's play in the front, but our teachers, just last week, we did a learning walk with our eighth-grade teachers at the high school, and we saw that none of the classrooms had that model going on in their room. So we are really at a point where creating really flexible spaces is important. We wrote a grant, and the CSF was really kind to approve this grant for two classrooms at the high school and one at each middle school, which we're really, really excited about. So thank you.
Todd, did you, did you want to provide some comments?
Yes, thank you for having me. My name is Todd Harrell. I'm the grants chair with the communities, Chapacua Schools Foundation, and Soli McChair, president, is here also, and we just wanted to take a quick minute to thank specifically Christine, Josh, Andrew, and Joe, along with the principals and teachers at all the Chapacua schools and the support staffs for partnering with CSF and supporting us on our grants. We'd also like to give a special thanks to Kathy Lynch and Mike Trinick, who support our applicants in ordering, the ordering process after our grants are approved, to ensure that these innovative ideas can be implemented in the classrooms as quickly as possible. Finally, we must thank our community for their support of CSF. Without their support, we could not fund these innovative initiatives and ideas that come from our teachers and our administrators. Josh has already explained what we funded for $125,000. It's for classroom redesigns. We were really excited to be able to support this idea that our board took part in, on the February 9 meeting. So we also have some idea of how this works, and we're incredibly excited to be a part of this, and thank you for your support of Chapacua School Foundation.
Todd, you're thanking us, but let me thank you because this is a substantial donation that'll have a wide range impact on our school district. So thank you to you and the CSF for supporting us in this way. So we really appreciate that. Hillary, did you?
No, thank you. The ongoing partnership and incredible support from the Chapacua Schools Foundation has enabled us to really have innovative programming and to offer programs that it's just would be impossible for us to have absent your support and your partnership and funding. So we thank you, and we're excited about this. I mean, we, we got to see the presentation from the math department and participate in it, and I will say, as someone who rarely says math was fun, it was fun, and I'm excited that this is the way that our students are able to learn, and it's a certainly more engaging and involved math curriculum experience than, than I think any of us grew up with. So it's exciting, and we really thank you for your support.
So my last slide before we transition into the first presentation of the evening is just an update slide of the events that we have coming up in districts. So we obviously have spring break next week, but then we have our BOSI's budget vote. We have a huge STEAM event that's going to be happening here at Greeley outside, where we'll be showcasing our new buildings for our elementary and middle school families. We're really excited about that. We are moving into our math tests, testing program. We have a theater production coming up. We have the CSF Spring Benefit that will be happening on April 29, so hopefully many of our families will be there. And then we will begin our orientations. Also, on the left side of this, I'm just highlighting for you some end-of-the-year events. On June 13 and 14, we will have our middle school concerts outside. If there is a weather problem at either, either building that afternoon, we'll hold them under the high school graduation tent because we have the tent coming early. And then you'll see on June 22, we plan to have our moving up ceremonies in the morning at the elementary school and in the afternoon at the middle schools. All of that will take place outside. So we're really looking forward to celebrating our students at the end of the year and we're beginning to plan. So that's also really exciting for us. So now we're going to transition over, and I'm going to give the clicker to Josh as he invites up our high school team to talk about some shifts that we are exploring with regards to our college application process. So Josh, can you introduce everybody?
Sure. Hi, everybody. So we have Lynn Stewart, Assistant Principal of the High School, and Rebecca Mullen, the Guidance Department Chairperson.
Hello. Thank you for having us tonight. We're here to talk to you about SCORE in particular, but really a review and implementation plan of a new college and career platform that we want to talk about today and our process and our, really our ask is that we switch to a new platform. So the first slide, Rebecca will discuss to you really what a college and career and online platform does.
So for those of you who don't know, an online college and career platform supports our students in so many different ways. First, it's the platform that they use to research colleges, and not only does it link to college websites and virtual tours, but most importantly, it holds all of the historical data for Greeley students applying to colleges. As colleges read applications within the context of their high school, it is most helpful for students to see the scattergrams that show really previous Greeley students, their statistics, and then the application outcomes at various colleges. This platform also allows us to schedule over 200 college visits for our students each year. The amount of documents that are submitted to colleges through an online platform is enormous. We submitted over 500 teacher letters of recommendation and thousands of transcripts to over 400 colleges and universities, both nationally and internationally. It's also important to point out that, unique to Greeley, over 90% of our students apply some version of early admission each year. So we're submitting over 2,000 transcripts plus the corresponding documentation prior to November 15. So the college application process here at Greeley happens very quickly and very intensely in the first two and a half months of school. So having a reliable system to submit through is essential to our students' and families' wellbeing.
So I'm actually remembering back to 15 years ago when we piloted Naviance. Before that, teachers would get stacks of envelopes for students, and we would print out letters and we would send them. And 15 years ago, we piloted this program where we could submit everything online to colleges that accepted it. The program hasn't changed in those 15 years. It was revolutionary back then. It was great. And it's also been bought by two separate companies, one of them now being a student management system called Power School. This past year, we had lots and lots and lots of trouble with sending recommendations. There were evenings that wound up happening, I'm looking at Rebecca and Lynn because they were here faxing transcripts and, and letters of recommendations to make sure that all of our colleges got everything for our students on time and correctly. When Naviance wasn't sending things out properly or correctly, they weren't allowing students to make updates to it, and there were families that would have trouble. And the other big thing that we were having was they didn't have any technical support that users could call. They're not built for that. So at that point, Chapacua and Greeley and lots of other school districts in our area who are all experiencing the same thing have been on my tech director message boards, on their counseling message boards. Everybody has been saying, you know, are there other options than Naviance that can better support what the college process in at course Greeley is like?
So that took us into the exploration process to say what else is out there, as Josh started to say. So what we did was we formed a research committee here at Greeley that consisted of teachers, administrators, and tech, our tech support. And we started to consult our regional high school counselors in different groups to talk to them to see what issues were they having, were they similar to ours, what systems were they looking into? And we started to discover that actually some similar caliber schools to Greeley had already started to migrate to other systems. So that helped us to start to narrow our search. There are tons of little, like, little companies out there, but none that are really tried and true. So as we started to review the list, we reached out to a lot of our college admissions counselors, and we started to ask them a lot about what platforms do they see more success, which do they prefer? We also reviewed the list that the colleges are supported by the platforms. So that was really important for us to make sure that if we found a new system that it really consisted of mostly the schools that our students apply to. Sometimes they give these really robust numbers, but they're not necessarily colleges that attract, are attracted by Greeley students. We also attended some platform demonstrations to really get a good sense of the interface, the capabilities, and again, even just down to finding out information around that tech support, which was really an issue more so this year than ever before. So with that, we came across SCORE, which again, many of our schools are in the region are already have either transferred to or in the same position as us, in which they're planning to do a full migration within the next year to two years. So a little bit about SCORE. It's an interesting fact. It's an Irish Gaelic term meaning transition from one phase to another. It's connected to already over 1,600 colleges and universities, and it's a network and a platform. So it looks to really, the whole goal of SCORE is to simplify the college process for not only the colleges, but the high schools and the students and the families. They have tons of excellent resources well beyond Naviance, where they have abilities to do comparisons that Naviance doesn't necessarily have. They have podcasts for resources for families and students, and they also have vlogs and blog articles, which really allow students to see videos of students on the campus themselves and giving some information from student to student. They also have, SCORE also has a mobile app that really is, can be accessed from anywhere and becomes very much user-friendly. So what are the advantages of SCORE? So there's an increase in colleges that Greeley students apply to on SCORE, and Rebecca's going to talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. We've discovered that SCORE from the demonstration, but as well as from talking to other schools, that they're really much more flexible. So Josh mentioned that with Naviance, one of the problems was once a transcript, for instance, was submitted, you couldn't resubmit. So if a student dropped a course, if there was a grade change, everything then had to go through paper, and, and we found that it wasn't as reliable. So with this new process, you can just resubmit a document and they see which one's the most updated. It sounds really simple, but that's actually huge when you go back to the numbers of transcripts that we're sending daily. It's much more of a user-friendly interface. We talked already about the specific college comparison. So if I'm a student and I want to start to say, okay, these are some of my top schools, there's a system where you can start to compare them right on the same screen, which is really helpful. And we just have found that while the schools that have already migrated have said that it's just much more of a reliable system than, than Naviance. It's also integrated with U-Scienc, which is a really cool platform that allows you to take an aptitude-based career assessment. So we will be doing that with, we usually do career assessments with 10th graders. It also has U-Visit, which is the college tours, and I already mentioned a little bit about the campus reels, which are vlogs about all the different campuses.
So these are the top 10 schools that our students apply to, listed in alphabetical order. The top three schools alone, which are Binghamton, Maryland, and Michigan, received 320 applications from Greeley seniors just this year. And in addition to SCORE supporting these colleges, they also support schools like Georgetown that did not accept submissions through Naviance. So that's a huge plus.
So our implementation plan, if we move ahead with SCORE, it's really critical in the spring, a lot of this work has to be done. So Josh is going to talk a little bit more specifically about the data migration, but the data migration will actually all be able to take place in a week's time. And what will happen is all of our historical data that was housed in Naviance will be able to be transferred over. We were not interested in going to a new platform without that capability. That is essential. That's where our scattergram plots are. That's where all of our, a lot of our conversations are driven from that historical data because it's so specific to Greeley. We will also have a person from SCORE that is our case manager. They are provided us step-by-step walkthrough support through the entire process. We can deal with one person who comes, they, they walk us through a whole presentation and are easily accessible. So that would happen for our counselors and clerical staff. We will also have teacher trainings because all of our teachers use Naviance, and in this case, SCORE, to upload their recommendations. Teachers in the past have really struggled with that, trying to get different recommendations uploaded for all of the students. So they, they will, they will supply us with the training, and we will have other backup trainings also through our counseling department. We also really want to focus on the rising seniors, so the class of 23. We want to have our groups for those students in the spring so that they can really head into the summer, having a good sense of an introduction, some familiarity with the program, as well as in their login. And what, another big difference with Naviance and SCORE is that through Naviance, you had to have an individual login. It was very much a nightmare to manage. Everybody had their own login, and it was just random. This is the single sign-in access that we have for everything else, so they could just use their Google login that they use for everything else that gets them onto SCORE, which is, makes, again, much more easy to manage. So that's all of our plan heading into the spring. And then in the summer, obviously, the counselors will still be in over the summer at different points. It will really be coming familiar with the platform as well as the clerical. Rebecca, the Counseling Department Chair, will be preparing SCORE for fall college submissions and the process. And then another difference is parents will receive a mass invitation to be able to have their own login. So in the past, because of, again, Naviance not being so easy, we've only had done that based on parent request. This system will allow us to do a mass login, tour, virtual training, and that's really, we think, is very critical for the partnership with the parents in this process. Then heading into the 2022, 2023 school year, obviously, we'll continue to have levels of support. We plan on introducing the juniors in small groups, which is again, the class of 24. That is in line with our traditional timeline, but it's, would be with SCORE. And then we would also introduce the 10th-grade students to SCORE as well, get them familiar with the platform early in their sophomore year, and allow them to do that career interest assessment inventory, and that's again, the class of 25. So by the end of the 2022, 2023, So by the end of the 2022, 2023 school year, our sophomores, juniors and seniors all will have had access logins and be able to become familiar with the platform. That's okay, I don't need that slide.
So one of the big things that we discussed in talking with my colleagues in other districts that uses products is around their data security and privacy, which is important. They're education law 2D compliant, which means all the data that is housed in SCORE, we own. We we can house both onsite and offsite at their location. And they have, all of their security and privacy practices are above industry standards. And this is something that we want to make sure that we protect our student information or our family's information to make sure it is is private and secure. Connecting it to our Chappaqua domain is a key piece of that, which is a really nice feature of SCORE. And I mean, I think also, I was asking lots of questions about data security. They picked up the phone immediately, which was really helpful, which is something when we tried to talk to Naviance, they didn't do. But and it's a really nice clean platform that is up to date, modern, looks nice, easy to navigate. And and I think you were discussing, there's already districts that are moved towards it. And there's multiple other districts in our county that are moving to it next year and like like we are.
So at this time, does the board have any questions that the high school team could answer or Josh?
I have a couple. Okay, so from a broad point of view, Josh, how many of the districts are using this around us and nationwide?
Yeah, so around us, around us, there for the past years, both Marneke or Bington use it. And then we know of at least five to 10 other school districts that are either at the same point in the process we are or are a month or two ahead or behind us in our area. And then nationwide, the number was.
They said one in 10, one in 10 high schools.
They said one in 10 high schools are using it nationwide. So it has a large proliferation across the nation and it's just entering into the New York region. Yeah.
So it's been used more not in the New York region.
Right, correct.
And Rebecca, you you mentioned top 10 schools. What about some of the smaller schools that our kids apply to?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. I went through the list of schools that are connected to SCORE and made sure that every school that our kids apply to, which is a lot, it's in the hundreds, are supported by it. So it's definitely covers all of our schools.
And if a student picks a school like some school that, I don't know, in the middle of nowhere or, you know, not nowhere, bad, bad sports, but somewhere where we own, you know, mid Midwest or up far northwest, northwest that we don't normally apply to, can we do that?
Definitely, we can, you know, we do have kids who apply to schools internationally that sometimes were not supported by Naviance. And even then, we figure out a way to get the stuff there. So no matter where they apply, you know, for the most part, I think they will be supported by SCORE. But those that aren't, we will find another way to get it there.
Okay, a couple more questions. Pricing, Josh?
It's about, it's the same, I don't have the number top, I have it, it's the same as Naviance.
Okay, so it's not.
It would be under, I actually, it's under $2,000 for the year contract.
Okay, but it's basically the same as Naviance.
It's it's cheaper.
Yeah. And we own the data, Josh, they don't own.
Yeah, so we own the data, right? They've signed all of our pledges to say that any data that's created is the property of the Chappaqua.
Because we had a conversation just about two or three years ago, we were discussing owning of data. The big question I would think, and I'm not in this position right now, what should parents of juniors be thinking about, worried about? What should juniors be thinking about, worried about? This is sort of the transition out. What do they have to do, what do we have to do to make them know that this is going to happen?
Sure, so we have, we have a contract of Naviance for the next two years. So we do have that on the on the back burner. But we really don't anticipate having to have both systems going at the same time because of the ability to migrate the data. So what we what we want families to know is that we know how stressful of a process this can be. So between the, going back to the timeline, that really what they need to know is that we really anticipate this being much smoother for them because of the single login, because of how easy the interface is, because of the mobile app capabilities. So that we're really going to have several groups for the students themselves to meet in the spring to make sure that they're really heading into the summer feeling really prepared to switch to this. And then also obviously the parent trainings through the summer.
Is there a backup plan or not? Do we need one?
You say backup plan?
Josh, is there like a backup plan or?
To, so the data is backed up by them. We don't anticipate this not working. If it does, we still have Naviance as our backup.
And then this is not a question about SCORE, but since you're here Rebecca, can you tell us? I've heard mixed information from parents. How do we do this year? I mean, not exact numbers, but what's your feeling regarding?
Well, the good news is that the platform doesn't have much to do with.
So our students, we we have been getting a lot of our, obviously the students' results and and we're really happy, our students always do very well. And this year, we really feel that we continue on that trajectory of getting into the the same caliber schools that our our traditional students get into. And it really was a very good year for our students.
That's it, sorry to take up over.
No, thank you. And interesting you said that about our contract with Naviance because I I wouldn't know, is it normally a multi-year contract? How does that, like, how do these contracts get renewed usually?
Yeah, so it's different. Naviance had had only signs multi-year contracts. So the way it works is since a board can only approve a contract year to year, even though we sign a five year contract, we have, we have, we will keep it for the year and then then sunset it after the five years. SCORE's contract is a year to year contract. So after the year, we can decide if this isn't working for us, we could move to something else.
Right, and and so it won't be any situation next year where, I mean, we're using both sort of as a backup and migration, et cetera. But the focus I would think would be to get the juniors rising into seniors up and running and then everyone will slowly move along as well. I just, first of all, thank you because I think some of us who have dealt with this over the years know that there have been glitches, but it seems like the only game in town, I think. What, did Naviance respond to any pushes, I would think, from districts, et cetera, to to change or to update, have a mobile app, you know, anything like that? Because it just seems like not a good business practice to do what they're doing right now.
So so they were purchased by a very large student management system, Power School. And I think like there, they had issues of integration into that business. And I really do think that they have been focusing on the districts that use Power School and trying to integrate it into their student management system. So the other two thirds, Power School probably does have coverage of about a third of the nation's schools. But Infinite Campus has another third and then the other third uses a bunch of other different things. So they have been focusing on that and not necessarily on schools that don't use that for whatever reason.
Like, how many did you have to look at? Like, I wasn't aware that there would be that many options, I guess. So were there really a lot of options for this sort of platform based college application?
There wasn't that would be like of the same caliber as Naviance.
Right.
So really there, for for us, it was very clear that we really just had to dive into SCORE to see if it had the advantages that we were looking at over Naviance. We did look at several others, but they were not, they didn't have, they weren't used in other regional schools. They weren't, they didn't have the same level of colleges that our students applied to. They didn't have the same features we were looking for. So really with that, as far as like diving into the demonstrations, we only needed to look at SCORE because the rest was eliminated through the research process.
And and it's just as easy to input everything from SCOREs and and recommendations and all that.
It's easier.
It's easier. It seems that way.
There's a lot of additional paperwork that that Naviance needed to have counselors uploading as well as teachers and SCORE has eliminated all of that. So it's it's much more streamlined, which is really, really helpful for, again, dealing with the volume and making sure that everything is much like very much accurate.
And are they covering all the schools? Because I, you know, I don't know if there are still schools that, don't take the Common App, don't take, you know, the 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 schools that have their own application and want everything mailed in. And I'm assuming there's still some of those out there.
There is always, yeah, there's always going to be those schools. And we have our systems that are, again, in place for those schools. Kind of Warren's point too, that, you know, we have, we have, we know how to communicate with those schools if they're not covered under SCORE. So we're really confident that a majority of the schools, really, a large majority of the schools are all covered. But those few in between, we've actually picked up a bunch of them through SCORE that were not in Naviance and then the other few. And they actually have a much larger international relationship with schools than Naviance did as well. But we we have systems for those other smaller schools or the few that say, nope, this is the only way we take any of your documentation. And we will, we of course, work with all those schools the way that they need.
Right, well, we we appreciate you taking the deep dive into this for the benefit of all of our families and and for your own mental health, I'm sure. Because I I can only imagine how challenging this must have been. So thank you for doing that. And this looks like a really positive step forward for us and for our families. So thank you.
All right, as a parent of a 23, my pulse is racing. Implement change, but I will be thrilled to not use Naviance because it is the bane of many families' existence as much as it is yours. My one recommendation is to over communicate to parents of juniors, current juniors, because this is going to be, while it is going to make it better at first, it's going to be very scary. So when you think you've over communicated, keep doing it. One other question, push notifications. Does the system alert students when their transcript has been sent or their recommendations have been sent? Because that's always been a point of concern where they have to call the admissions. They have to call, you know, you guys. And that's just extra time spent to close that loop with them.
So to that point, I I don't know if Rebecca can speak exactly to that, but I actually don't know that exact answer. But what I can tell you is that one of the really great features about SCORE is that they have built in communications and timelines that regularly get pushed out. So if if they're coming close to certain deadlines, if they, if you need to do your financial aid forms, they have all of these systems that actually communicate different timelines that Naviance never had. So there are some additional communication systems built in. As far as the actual confirming that the schools received it, they they did not, they did not tell us that that was a feature.
I think like Naviance, what it shows is that the materials have been submitted and when they've been submitted. And then so students would still need, you know, if a college reached out to the student or to us and said, you know, we still don't have that transcript, which occasionally happens, we would then just shoot it out again through SCORE.
Well, thank you very much. I'm hoping this is as seamless as you guys say it is, fingers crossed.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Lynn, Rebecca and Josh. Josh, I have my clicker back because now we're going to move into the budget presentation. So tonight is the night that the central office team presents the district budget for your consideration for adoption for next academic year. So we've gone through many of these slides before with the Board of Education at numerous meetings. So we'll run through this presentation as quickly as possible because I understand it's getting late. So our budget proposal is about $134 million or 2.69% increase or in our in our budget for next year, which equates to about $3.5 million. Our budget, we feel, is aligned with your strategic questions. Question one, making sure that we're providing the best program that we can in a fiscally responsible way. Question two, making sure that we are providing an academic program for our students that encourages them to think independently, deeply and creatively. And then question three, ensuring that we have a robust social emotional learning curriculum for our students. We also, given the parameters of what we've been dealing with in terms of the pandemic and the impact of that on our budgeting and our and our planning, we made sure that students remained at the center of all of our decisions, that we presented a budget that preserved or and expanded our programs, that we made adjustments based on the impact of COVID on our school community. And I know that Hillary had mentioned some concerns regarding class size that has been recently communicated. And again, I would like to remind the community that we will absolutely revisit our class sizes over the summer and make adjustments as necessary as we did last summer. We are prioritizing our infrastructure needs. We're mindful of our residents who don't have children that come to our district who are concerned about their taxes and aligns to our strategic plan, which has six priority areas that we'll talk a little bit more about as we work through the presentation. But just in general terms, making sure that we're using our instructional spaces to amplify our learning, that we are keeping assessment practices in mind and and communicating with more frequency to our parents regarding student progress, aligning our social emotional learning curriculum, aligning our academic program, particularly at the elementary and middle school levels, using instructional technology to personalize our learning and creating culturally and cultivating equitable affirming and culture responsive learning environments in our school district. So now I'm going to transition over to Adam, who will talk about our student performance and our curriculum and instruction highlights.
Thanks, Christine. So our first couple of slides are, show some student performance data. This first slide is from last year where we watched our student performance very carefully because it was a really unique year with all of our cohorts and shortened days and whatnot. You could see really nice, this is a map scores. And this is actually pre-COVID normed score. So you see that even with the pandemic, our our students continued to grow. You see the fall, the winter and the spring assessments for the different grades. So you see really nice steps, which we like to see, and that consistent growth across the district through the grades. So our kids continue to grow, thrive despite the struggles of the pandemic last year. We also, I wanted to report the English region score on the left and the algebra region score on the right. 2020, that score was, or that those assessments weren't given. That was when we were closed and remote fully in the spring of 2020. But 2021, strong showing. And we see just a little bit of a dip there on the right side with the middle school students all taking the algebra regions. That was that shift in in program that we've spoken about and we'll speak about more at a future meeting. I did want to share 2021 data. This is our class of 2021. Pretty soon we'll have 2022 data, but this is, last year's class did really well. You see the ACT scores there, the average SAT scores, and then some of the recognitions on the left side. So again, just a strong showing from our academic program and our students. AP exam results, I shared these with you earlier in the school year in the board's performance report. But I did want to share that our students continue to to do really well when it comes to not only the number of students that access our AP program, but also the their their scores, the average scores on those exams. A top score, obviously, on an AP is a five. Some, just to to summarize some of the curriculum and instruction highlights, you see them up here. All of these are aligned to the district strategic plan. And several of them have been in the works for several years since we launched that strategic plan four years ago. So you see things like the universal screener put in place. Science 21 is our consistent elementary science program. Technology tools, phonics first, our emphasis on reading programs, including Wilson Training, a new kindergarten screener through ESGI, which Jamie and her team implemented. I guess it was about two years ago now. And K8 social studies, we did a presentation on that to the board earlier in the year. So now we have a nice nicely mapped K8 social studies program. You see, you know, we're really proud of our professional learning opportunities for our teachers, you know, just to invest and and build the professional capital of the district. So you see a variety of powerful professional learning opportunities, guest speakers, consultants, conferences, in-service classes, learning teams, et cetera, that we support through the curriculum and instruction budget and office. And also we support a wide variety of events, many of which focus on professional development, but many of them impact students directly. So you see things like Conference Day, Unity Days, Wellness Days, PTA programming in partnership with the PTA, cultural enrichment, environmental education, also in partnership with the PTA, new teacher orientation, administrative retreats, work with insight, our PPS review that Jamie mentioned earlier. So those are just some of the event planning and coordination that we do in the curriculum office.
Thank you, Adam. Now we're going to transition over to special education and to Jamie.
Good evening. So we, as a school district, continue to be committed to inclusion and to making sure that our students are having their needs met and their education in the least restrictive environment possible. In addition to that, we work hard to ensure that our programs prepare students. And so that by the time that they graduate from our school district, they have the characteristics, skills and attributes as a really graduate. And so that by the time that they graduate from our school district, they have the characteristics, skills and attributes as a really graduate. There are five main components to the special education budget, and they include contractual services, which might be contracts with a psychiatrist or an audiologist, depending on what our students need, the salaries of the special education teachers and service providers who are in our district, tuition for our students who attend programs out of our district, transportation to those programs, and the extended school year, which is a summer program that is offered to our students who significantly regress during the summer months. This chart shows how our students are distributed across the 13 classification areas. What you'll notice is that we really are pretty stable with the exception of other health impairment where we show a little bit of an increase. And that category speaks to health impairments like ADHD that impact a student's learning in the classroom. So it could be any health impairment. We continue to offer a wide range of program priorities and programs. And most of our priorities for the upcoming school year are a result of the extensive audit conducted by PCG. So as Hillary mentioned in her, in her opening remarks, we are in the process of planning how those recommendations will be implemented over the next several years. We are going to have an integrated co-taught class at eighth grade for algebra. We will offer professional development in a variety of areas, as I spoke about before, working to have a consistent multi-tiered system of support. And as always, communication and collaboration with our, our community is critically important to our work.
Okay, we're going to transition back over to Adam, who will share our instructional technology and infrastructure portion of our budget.
Thanks. So, so with regard to technology, we really have four main components that make up the technology. Components that are in this year's budget. One of them is the addition of Ponderance, which is a 24/7 detection and response firm. So they will monitor our network 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and also provide upgrades and, you know, updates and patches and things like that as soon as they're released. And they'll, they'll monitor for threat detection and notify us if, if we have any issues that we need to address. We also have upgrades to the infrastructure as well as a focus on EdLaw 2D. Infrastructure technology costs you can see on the left side. That's things like upgrading routers, switches, Wi-Fi access, et cetera. And there on the right side, Education Law 2D is all about keeping our data secure and private, especially with regard to student data. So making sure we've got the hardware and software in place to make sure that we can keep that data secure and private. We also just wanted to mention some device refresh. So we have a device, kind of a device refresh cycle. So the third and fourth grade iPads are now five years old. So we can sell them back and get a little bit of credit for them. And we apply it to the purchase of new devices in third grade and fourth grade. And then each year we refresh, the fifth graders get new devices and they have those devices through middle school. So five, six, seven, eight. So that's the refresh for next year with regard to the devices for students.
And I just wanted to highlight briefly, although Jeff had come and presented on the athletic budget to the board, we just, we plan on offering all of the same programmatic sports teams in the fall, winter and spring as we have done in their previous year and all have been included in the budget moving forward. So now Andrew will talk about our buildings and grounds budget for next year.
Thank you, Christine. So on the left-hand side of this slide, you see some of the projects that are operated, maintained, budgetable support in the next school year, including some repairs, coordination with our IT department for some of the technology and wireless work in the Seafield and roof repairs, which is a priority for us in many of our buildings. On the right-hand side, you see the, the roof of West Orchard. As we've shared many times now in the budget-making process, we're asking for $600,000 as part of the budget to expand the amount of repairs that we can do at that building because it is our worst in the district.
Okay, so I just wanted to share with the board and again with the community, there are certain items and capital needs that aren't included into this budget, in this budget because of our levy limit that we, that need additional consideration and possible bond consideration moving into the future. And that deals with our roofs, our front entrance at Greeley, based on that study that we had done prior to the pandemic about safety and security. We're having some issues with our wiring at Greeley and our internet connection. We've been talking about building outside classrooms at the elementary school since we feel like we need to use our outdoor spaces more than we have in the past. Our underground infrastructure at Greeley is becoming highly problematic for us, as you know, through some of the issues we've had to deal with this year alone. And then there are potentially other items that might be identified in the building condition survey that need to be prioritized by the Facilities Committee for the board's consideration moving into the future. So now we're going to go into our financial slides. So Andrew?
So you've seen many of these slides before. This chart is a graphical representation of what our budget history has been, including the current school year. The bars being the budget and tax levy, blue and yellow. Then the lines being the annual increases for each of those. And we're representing our proposed budget, $133,961,411, a 2.69% increase, and then a 2.79% increase on the tax levy. The next chart is just a comparison of certain budget categories. So we've gone through this in detail, but certainly you can see salaries and benefits are going up modestly in salaries, but significantly in benefits. And then some of the larger increases are in special education, BOSI services and technology. We've described all those before. The last line item there being the transfer to capital. This, this slide is really the same information in terms of dollars, but it just gives you a picture that salary and benefits are still largely the largest part of our budget. And that's where most of our money is spent. How are we funding this all? The next chart shows our revenue projections for the next school year and where we're seeing some increases. We mentioned that this is a tax levy compliant budget. So we're at 2.79% or 3.173 million in terms of the tax levy increase year to year. And the state aid numbers are based on what's currently projected. And here you can see our breakdown on a percentage basis of how the budget is being funded for each of those categories.
So we, we still don't have a state aid?
We don't have a final state aid number. I was actually searching just a few minutes ago to see if there was any updates, but I didn't see any. So we do not anticipate any significant hindrance to this number. I don't expect much increase either, but that's still to be determined. And the next two slides are really just some of the known impacts that we've gone over before. We've got some known enrollment projections, TRS and ERS, we know the impact of those. Our health insurance increases 8% was a significant number for us this year. And we have some labor contracts that are settled. On the next slide, you can see debt service, that's something that we've got fixed. And then the final pieces of information there are all related to our tax cap and our tax rate information. So I won't go through those right now. Our unknown impacts, certainly our teacher contract is, is one that we have to settle before the coming school year. State aid, we just talked about. Transportation costs are also subject to CPI. So we'll have to finalize those later in the year. Special ed placements, CSE process is still underway for many of our students. We'll see where those final costs lie later in the, in the school year. And an important piece here, just to talk about is inflation really, because we are seeing pressure on costs. So this next chart shows kind of the trend. February's number is at 6.6%, I believe it was. And we expect that to continue into the current month to see that upward tick. So we are concerned about the pressure that we're going to have on our expenses from supplies to fuel will be difficult in the coming school year. The next slide is just our estimated tax rate. As I've mentioned before, the tax rate is created by the towns based on the levy that we provide to them. But as of right now, the town of Newcastle, our tax rate is increasing by 1.78%. And the tax rate for the town of Mount Pleasant Properties is going up by 8.21% based on the current information we have from those entities as well as the state. Our tax cap calculation, which we filed on March 1st, has not changed. So this is the, the long version of that calculation showing our current year's tax levy. We adjust the calculation per the guidance that we have from the state, and it results with our exclusions being added back and a tax levy limit of $3,173,211 or 2.79% increase year over year. And that is the number that we need to stay within to have a simple majority vote. If we don't pass the budget with a simple majority vote, we can go to a contingency budget. Contingency budget would require us to reduce this proposed budget by $3.1 million basically because we need to have a zero tax levy increase year over year. We do have two opportunities to vote on the budget. If the first one fails, the board can decide to go out to vote with the same or a different budget. But if that second budget fails, we would be forced to go to this path. It's important to note that if we cut out every supply that we have in the district from all categories, we would only be halfway there. So certainly there'd be deep cuts in other areas of the budget. Finally, as part of the resolution 3.1, you're adopting the budget, but you're also approving the property tax report card. This is just a summary view that's required by the state. It will be included in the budget book that's published. It will also be provided to the Journal News as we do every year. This is the summary of the year-to-year comparisons of our tax levy. And then the second chart is just a breakdown of our reserves fund balance and, and how that's going to be used for the coming year. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. That's, those are the first two new charts you have. And I apologize for the I chart. It is a form that's, it's provided by the state. So we just want to make sure you have the actual form in front of you.
I can see pretty well, but I can't see that so well. Regarding, maybe to bear without my glasses, regarding the fund balance, do we take a look at increasing or using a larger fund balance to lower the rate?
I, I think what we'll see coming towards the end of this year is, you know, fund balance is, we've got some pressure on it. We've used quite a bit this current school year for some of our emergency spending. We, we are projecting to still be in the 3% to 4% range, which is important for unassigned fund balance. But, but we do, you know, want to keep our credit ratings high and we want to show strong, you know, balance sheet. So I, I think to, to go any further with fund balance could cause other implications that we're not maybe prepared for.
Past, we've done that. We've adjusted fund balance, try and lower the, the tax impact. So, but I know we've spent a lot of money on things beyond our control, like a little thing called COVID, right? So, okay.
But we are within the state mandate for our unassigned fund balance. So, you know, we need to be below 4%. We are below that. And depending on, on where we land with, with some of our tax proceedings, things like that, the, the reserve fund balances might, might be.
This can still be adjusted. I mean, we have the budget where we're going, but we can adjust the numbers as we go forward.
Yes.
Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome.
So now Tony's going to talk about our enrollment projections and sections moving into next year.
Thank you, Christine. So this slide just documents the negotiated agreements between the CCT and the district around class size and the threshold. You'll see K broken down with 20 students, first grade with 23, second through fourth grade, up to 25 students per class, and then five through 12. So those are numbers that exist and have been existence as we work off of when we develop our class size. Here you'll see the elementary school sections and enrollment. There is a slight decrease in enrollment, which does lead to a dip in the number of sections that we have projected for elementary. But as Christine and Hillary mentioned earlier, that is a dynamic situation and we will be monitoring that closely. Next up, we have our middle school sections, which also reflect a slight decline in enrollment. And as a result, a slight decline in sections, but we will be monitoring that closely as well, using the thresholds as a guide for what would happen moving into the fall. Finally, we have the high school sections. There we actually see an increase in our projected enrollment. And that's why you'll see a pretty static representation in class size from this year to next year.
Thank you, Tony. So just in terms of our summary and our, and our calendar moving forward. So as we presented to you, we're proposing a budget of about $134 million or 2.69% increase. We feel like the budget that we've presented to you responds to your strategic questions and aligns with our strategic coherence plan, meets the operating standards for the district, supports physical, social, emotional safety, maintains funding for equity and diversity professional development, adheres to our class size contractual requirements, adjusts personnel based on enrollment, maintains a robust professional learning program, and keeps our budget below the tax cap to ensure it's fiscally sustainable. Just some information regarding voting. If any one has questions whether or not they registered to vote, they can certainly contact Lisa. There's some language about who's eligible to vote that people can refer to. But again, if there's any questions, you can certainly call my office and Lisa will be able to support them. We have some information about absentee ballots and there's a timeline that needs to be followed that takes place prior to the vote on the 17th. So again, they should contact Lisa if there's any questions about voting through an absentee ballot. We also have all this information online. We have three Board of Education seats that are up. Two seats are three-year terms and one seat is a one-year term that begins on May 18th. And seat placement is based on vote count. And there's some language about qualifications for membership on the school board. And then just a reminder, all nominating petitions are due to Lisa on April, by, on or by April 18th. In terms of our budget calendar, so tonight is the night that we're asking you to consider adopting the budget by resolution. And then on May 4th, we'll have our budget hearing, which is required under regulation. And that's when the public library budget will also, will also be presented to the community at our, at our meeting. If there are any comments on the budget that our community wishes to share, they can certainly make a comment tonight or at the budget hearing, or they can email us. They can email the board directly. They can email Andrew or I directly. And of course, we're available to meet with anyone that has questions on the budget. So thank you. And that's the end of our budget presentation for the night. So we can take any questions with the understanding for those who are in attendance, the board has been to many meetings on our budget. So this is really an overview of what we've been presenting for the past few months.
I have a couple of comments. So thank you very much, Andrew and the administrators for bringing this forward to us. I think it shows us what we're doing and where we're headed. I know we work very hard, you guys work very hard on the budget to make sure that we're meeting our educational goals, our fiscal goals. I know there, there are some questions in the community regarding what we're doing. I think the budget does what we're trying to do. I think we have to make, ensure that we maintain the rigor in our schools with the programs that we're putting in place. So as long as, or Adam, I have faith that your, that the curriculum you're putting forward is going to continue doing that. Because I think that's what people want. They want to see that we're not skimping on the rigor and we're going to continue having the best education we can for the children. Tony, you mentioned class size. I mean, and we mentioned that, and Hillary mentioned that, Christine mentioned that earlier. You know, class size is very fluid. Every year we go through, especially at the elementary school, where we have a class or section or two that seem a little higher than others. I know in the summer, we, when we finalize our numbers, we get to balance that. And I know we usually have a, some, some money in the budget that we can adjust for faculty to do that with. Facilities is always, I'm on Facilities Committee, but that's always a, a big punch for us. We have to make sure that we're keeping our buildings in tip-top shape. And, you know, I hear from other people and from people in other communities when they come to see our facilities, whether it's for arts exhibit, music or sports event, they're always impressed by the cleanliness and the, the maintenance of our buildings. And as long as we keep that up, that's great because that's where our kids are going to be learning. So we have to continue keeping that in the budget. 2.6 is a nice big number, but I think it's compared to what we, what we've been spending on COVID for the past couple of years. I mean, we're, I think one of the only districts that's never closed our doors after we open them. And that goes without saying with all the hard work by the administration. And that goes without saying with all the hard work by the administration and the staff to do that. So thank you very much for the hard work, and I though I think I would like to see some other things in or out of the budget, you know, because those are personal. I think the budget meets what we're trying to do, and I will be happy to vote yay for that for tonight.
I would just like to comment, I know we have done a set through a lot of these individual budget presentations, so this is a real overview for us, although I think it's really helpful for the community to see this in a package like this. And I just want to say that I appreciate the work that is put into this. I I would hope that maybe the community, if they have some questions, they will reach out to us. But they will also look at what was at the top of this document, which is our, you know, strategic planning and and all the spokes to the wheel that make everything go. And we are revisiting a lot of those elements. Right now, we're doing focus groups on our DEI work. We've added in a lot of work on social and emotional learning. We've had equity audits, we've had special ed audits, and we are constantly trying to push ourselves to make sure that all of this is current. What I do appreciate, though, is putting in the budget, too. There's there's facilities issues to keep our to keep our structures in intact and in good shape. And I know that I appreciate, I mean, I know there's a big wish list of things that we would like to improve, but I think it's very good for the community to see all the things that we will eventually get to, and we do get to them. And some of them are big-ticket items, and somehow we always find a way to put some of that in our budget and then realize if we have to do, you know, another bond or something like that. But I think it's very important for the community to see what's in front of us, what they can anticipate. And I think that this really hits everything in a very straightforward way with keeping into the tax levy limits. So I appreciate all the hard work that was put into this, and I support everything that's in there. So thank you.
And just as with everybody else, I do understand how much work goes into doing this, and I know that the minute we say good to go on this one, you're already working on next year's. This is an ongoing effort, and I appreciate that it takes so many people to pull this together, and it does meet the needs of both the community and the students. So thank you for all you do, and will be doing again, starting tomorrow on the next one.
Yeah, I want to reiterate the thanks and also just highlight, I think that what's hard to understand is how much of the budget is set before we even start looking at the budget and how many things are just frankly beyond anybody's controls, such as retirement contributions going up astronomically this year. And, you know, so that when we look at a budget, you know, and you highlighted this in one of the later slides, but it's it's a hard sort of, it's hard math, that even though it's a budget increase overall, there's actually very little increase that's within our discretion within the district. And I think that that's an important thing for the community to understand is that so many, you know, having having a flat budget is actually a negative budget for us, because there are so many increases that are unavoidable and not discretionary. And so I thank everybody up here for the incredible amount of work that went into crafting this budget. I think it is actually a fairly conservative budget, given the the measures beyond our control that that we have to account for. But I think it is a budget that, you know, strives to meet our our goals as a district and to really give our students a top-notch education in top-notch facilities. And, you know, that's that's what we're up here aiming to do. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to our team for presenting with me this evening. Appreciate you guys for all your hard work. So thank you. And that's the end of the superintendent's report.
Okay. That brings us to committee reports. So we had a policy committee meeting this morning. Warren, you want to?
Policy committee met today. We discussed purchasing, two purchasing policies, and we had a couple of changes that David and Andrew are going to work on, and we'll have to the board for the first meeting in May for first reading. Health and safety and facilities did a walkthrough, and we went through Grafflin, Warren Brook, Seven Bridges, and West Orchard. So we got a lot of, we got to see all the buildings, see what was going on, so thank you.
Went up on the roof. We saw the roofs ourselves, went up there, too.
Two roofs.
Yes.
Two roofs, Jane. And I don't like heights, but thank you, Andrew and Joe, for taking us and the community up there and letting us see what's really going on in the buildings. That's it.
And we just, yes, that those walkthroughs are really fantastic for us, and we do have a couple of members of the community who joined us on those as part of our advisory committees, and it's really helpful. So we'll be, I know you will have building reports later on in the season to let us know where we stand with everything like that. But I'm always so impressed by everything that our maintenance staff does to keep our buildings in top shape. And the only other thing that I would add is that last Thursday evening was the virtual Horace Greeley Scholarship Fund benefit. They made a decision to hold it virtually this year, but nonetheless, it was really wonderful, and they opened it up to the entire community. And as many of you may already know, the two honorees this year were Joe Kearns and Reader Santilia, and they, it was really lovely, a lot of wonderful videos from colleagues and family members supporting these two very deserved honorees. And I know that the the Scholarship Fund is meeting now, but I think they raised over $200,000, all of which will go to scholarships to fund college educations for our Greeley students and much needed, given the cost of higher education now. So I really want to thank the Horace Greeley Scholarship Fund for a wonderful presentation and a wonderful effort on behalf of all of our students. They did a great job.
Brings us to the public comment period. So we welcome public comments, and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may also be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, the board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding the comments presented. So if you'd like to make a public comment, there are two microphones at the bottom of the aisles. Please come on down.
Hi, my name is Vincent Santilia. I'm the captain of the Horace Greeley lacrosse team. And today, our coach was, he was terminated, and he was, he had to, I'm not sure exactly what what happened, but he's no longer the coach. He's no longer the coach. And I just wanted to say that I think that it's beyond unfair to all of us to have our coach taken away in the middle of a season. Right now, we're three and three, and, I mean, all of these guys can vouch for me. If you guys want to stand up right now. Our coach is a role model for each and every one of us. I've been with him for four years. He's an excellent person, and he emphasizes character, and he really does make us better men. And it's heartbreaking to have him taken away from us, when I believe that he's been here for five years. And I just, again, I want to say that I feel that it's unfair. And I'm just, I'm at a loss of words. Like, right now, my my heart is beating right now, and I love this school. This is a wonderful place. I love this town. I just, I just, this decision is just very hard for us to deal with, because we we love Coach Zuzai, and we love all of our coaches. And he really does help us become better people, and he he teaches us, he teaches us life lessons, and it's really, it's not just about lacrosse with him. He's just such an amazing person. And, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Do you guys respond now, or I don't know how that? No? Okay. Hi, thank you all for coming and being here tonight, and thank you for entertaining my questions. Thank you for the budget presentation. I have a few questions about it. The first is, oh, yeah, my name is, my name is Chris, and I have children in all, Chris Deely, and I have children in every school imaginable here, including SUNY Binghamton, big user of the school system. I'm curious, I wrote it down here, so what is the breakdown? Is there a way we could get a breakdown of how much money will be spent on DEI, including staff salaries, insult, insight consultants, and speaker costs for the two unity days? Is there any way we can get access to any of that?
Public comment period, not a question and answer, so we take public comments, but...
Thanks, Hillary. Okay. And then my next question is, and what is the amount of money allocated to adding new teachers to support increased class size across all grades in light of new students, as well as the loss of seasoned teachers? The reason I bring this up is because, and I'm not sure if this is accurate or not, but I did hear that one of the staff members on the DEI staff is slated to make $195,000 next year. And I'm curious how much the salary is of the longest-tenured teacher here in Chapaka School Districts. So is there any way I can find any of that information now?
Why don't you finish your comment, and then we can have a discussion after?
But that's, I finished.
We have discussion after the public comment session has concluded.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is Rich Braille. I have a junior at Greeley. I have two other sons who've gone through Greeley. I'm in here on behalf of the Greeley Lacrosse Association, which is the high school lacrosse program parent booster organization. Vinnie very eloquently spoke on behalf of the 20 varsity players who all showed up on a moment's notice after they saw that there was a resolution calling for the termination of their coach. It's my eighth year as being part of the booster program for the lacrosse program. I've seen three coaches and three athletic directors during this period. We disagree with this resolution because the board calling for the termination of Coach Zuzai. Where is the due process, and why is the termination so hastily being called for? Coach Zuzai has been the coach of the program for six years, and I think it's be appropriate for the players and the public to hear the basis for the termination. Some of the alleged reasons were at games, which all the spectators, parents, and players all witnessed. So whatever observations there may have been, it'd be important for people to understand the consequences. We also ask why mid-season, the impact on the players and the program is significant. They've been through enough with COVID to disrupt their lacrosse season midway seems hasty. Coach Zuzai organizes the program year-round, and the season is the culmination of a tremendous amount of hard work and dedication by a person who has a separate career, he's not a teacher, and has three, well, young children. We ask that you not act on this resolution tonight and do further fact-finding and get additional input from the players, most importantly, but anyone else who may have been an observer at any of these games or other activities. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Toby Moscow. I'm the goalie of the lacrosse team. I'm a sophomore. And though I've only been here two years at Greeley and last year with COVID, I mean, last year, playing lacrosse was the highlight of my year, after basically sitting in my room, just being bored, and playing lacrosse for the coaches I love, with the people I love, and the town I love. It meant the world to me. And Coach Zuzai is not only a great coach, he's a great person. He wants the best for their players and like, and the best for the people he like, he works with. Coach Zuzai always emphasizes how small details matter, and I completely agree with him. He's taught me many life lessons. In school every day, we develop skills like mathematics that we may or may not use in our future. In practicing games with Coach Zuzai, we develop skills that we will 100% use for the rest of our lives. And I don't mean the ability to save a lacrosse ball. I mean that he teaches us how to hold ourselves and others accountable for our actions as young adults. He teaches us the importance and benefits of hard work, and he teaches us to work as a collaborative cohesive unit that is extremely valuable to the development of our teamwork skill. I please ask that you guys reconsider this decision, as we are all very hurt by this. Thank you.
Okay, we thank everybody for their public comments. That is the close of the public comment period. Does the board or the administration wish to respond to any of the public comments?
So aside from personnel matters that need to remain private for the gentleman that had come up with budget questions, if it would be appropriate, if you could reach out to Andrew Lennon, he can help navigate those questions for you and get the answers that you have, that you're seeking. Thank you. We can, if you if you just hang out after the meeting, he'll connect you. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? All right. So that brings us to approvals and ratifications. I will move item 3.1, which is be resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the proposed budget and ratifies the property tax report card for the 2022-2023 school year. Obviously, well, let me, can I get a second?
My second.
We discussed it after the presentation, but here's an opportunity if anybody has any further questions or discussion regarding the budget.
Thank you very much.
So all in favor of 3.1?
Aye.
Can I have a motion for 3.2?
I move item 3.2.
I'll second 3.2.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I recommend item 4.1 instructional as presented.
I move item 4.1 as presented.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I'll move 4.2.
Second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to five, which is the consent agenda. The use of a consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting in a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. So as a preliminary matter, does anybody want to remove anything from this consent agenda?
No.
Okay. And can I have a motion for items 5.1 through 5.9?
I move 5.1 through 5.9.
I will second. This covers CSE summaries, some special ed agreements, purchase order increases, and notably, the CSF grant that was described earlier in the presentation. So again, thank you to CSF. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's nothing under facilities or financials this evening, so that brings us to our notice of future meetings. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, April 19th, at 9:00 a.m., which is the annual BOC's Budget and Election, which will be at the Ed Center. And then the following meeting will be Wednesday, May 4th, at 7:30, and that is the budget hearing and Chapaka Library presentation, and that will be here. So can I have a motion, please, to adjourn at 9:13 p.m.?
I move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.